Volume at this time. If someone wants to send us a message and let us know volume is working.
I could try to talk a little louder as well.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be real loud.
Okay. So, we were looking at the site itself and we're on page C5 at this point. And C5 is even a closer look at the facility. And this simply describes the two different items that we're looking at constructing. Number one, we need to put a little accessway, which is going to be very short. We've got a little turnaround area there. And you can see right to the right of that is where our compound is going to be. And our compound is specifically a 50 by 50-foot fence compound. And inside the fence compound is going to be our tower structure. And what we use for our equipment, our ground equipment, is simply a number of outdoor cabinets that's going to sit on top of a steel grated pad. In the past, many of these facilities use the big communications buildings that -- prefab that come in. But our equipment's been shrinking over the past couple of years, so we simply use outdoor cabinets for our radio equipment and whatnot. Next page is a detail of the tower itself. We're proposing 195-foot tower. That's exactly what the ordinance limits towers at in town, 195 feet. So, that's where we are here. One of the reasons why we're looking at 195-foot tower is -- the first reason is the coverage footprint that this is going to provide, and we'll discuss that in a little bit, because we were also required to submit some radio frequency plots showing what we are looking to cover. Secondly, the ordinance requires that the tower facility, the tower itself, be constructed so it enables some co-locators. And of course, the co-locators are simply future competing carriers, for instance, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Sprint, et cetera. If they want to use this tower, they're free to. And you can see that that's exactly what this tower shows. It shows U.S. Cellular's equipment at the top in red. And then you'll see below are -- there's space for three additional people. And when I say "people," again, that coincides with Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, the big ones that we typically see around here. So, the other important items on this page is up in the right-hand corner, we've got Two of the real important notes up there, the first two. Number one, we wanted to point out that this does -- we do make an attempt for this to blend into the environment. Two items there. Number one, your ordinance already requires us to do a monopole. And that's -- most communities do opt for monopoles only because the alternative, they call standalone towers, which we use a lot, are these big three-to-four-legged things that their base is something like a 20-foot wide base. And of course, our monopole, the base of the pole is something in the neighborhood of 60 inches in diameter. So, you just have a much more narrow profile with a monopole. Plus, as the note says in the upper right-hand corner, that, you know, we're going to leave the natural steel gray galvanized finish that we find blends with the sky to a large extent. Also, you require -- our footnote number two talks about we're adhering to the EIA-TIA structural standards, it's a requirement in the ordinance, but we do that anyway. Don't need to spend a lot of time on the next page. I described that our equipment on the ground is provided in steel cabinets, our radios. We have also -- one of the cabinets is going to have a series of gel batteries for backup power, in case we lose power. And we were required to call that out because the ordinance asked us to discuss if there's any toxic materials that we're going to be using. I don't know that batteries are toxic materials, but that's really the only thing that may be of some danger. But, again, that's a gel battery, which is a lot more user-friendly than acid-type batteries. And we're in a steel cabinet, and we're in a locked, fenced-in compound, so. Next page, I'm going to skip over this. This is just our utility page. FYI, we do have to bring in our own utilities. We're going to have some separate metering. And neither here nor there, but these sites, we bring in 800 amps of power. And each carrier, U.S. Cellular, probably will have something in the neighborhood of 200 amps reserved for its usage, but we're probably going to use something less than 100. And the reason for 800 is, again, if we have future people come in, we're going to have the available power for future people to come in. I think I can skip over this page. This is just a -- in equipment overview, looking straight down on the tower. Lot of this focuses on -- we're going to have to discuss this. This isn't part of the ordinance requirements or anything. But these items through the middle of the pages are what the actual radios are. Instead of having big, huge radios on the ground, we have mini-radios that are affixed to the tower close to the antennas, so we don't have RF loss in the cables these days, The importance of the next page is the ordinance requires us to submit a stormwater and erosion drainage plan. And when we get to that plan, that plan will describe some of the measures that we're going to be using. We -- it was pretty low-key, what we're required to do for runoff and whatnot. That's why we only have a couple details here up in the left-hand corner. Again, that area was so flat, it's already developed, that we really weren't required to do a lot of stormwater items there. Next page, the most important thing here, it simply shows our fence. We're proposing an eight-foot-tall chain-linked steel fence with 12 inches of barbed wire on the top. Finally, the last page, not going to spend any time going through this. This is essentially our construction notes. And as you can tell, you know, what we're presenting in these plans are specifically our construction plans there. You know, some people, when they come in to do these site plan reviews, you know, they use a different zoning set, but this is our construction plans. So, that's a description of our project. And what I'd like to do at this point is just quickly go down through the ordinance, the conditional use permit section, and the items that I called out, that I already mentioned was required here, maybe I'll skip over those because we just touched those. But there's going to be a couple things additional to what I haven't discussed yet that I'll call out, if that's okay. And by the way, when I pause for a minute or two, that's just because I'm skimming down to find the next relevant section, so. The conditional use section asks about subsurface wastewater treatment system. This is an unmanned facility. We're not requiring any sewage or water supply or anything. We are not in the shoreland zoning ordinance or floodplain management ordinance section. There are a couple questions in here about traffic to be generated. We don't really anticipate -- or these things really don't generate a lot of traffic. After our initial construction, which may take something in the neighborhood of 12 weeks or so, after initial construction, U.S. Cellular's maintenance program is officially one visit per quarter. So, the guys are supposed to show up four times a year, but that doesn't mean that they may show -- they may show up more often just to swap out some equipment or something. So, we say that you should expect one vehicular traffic or one vehicular visit per month on average. Couple questions about a state highway. This is not located off a state highway. We're required to get the fire chief's thoughts. And you'll see, I added to this packet a response from the fire chief. That's the first attachment there. And also, you'll see that the fire chief mentioned that he's got no problem with the project. The only thing that he asked is he'd like to have a Knox box put there. And, you know, if you want to make that, when we ask for approval, if you want to make that a condition, we'd be happy to do that. Value of all public improvements associated with the development, alterations and whatnot. We, as explained, this project really doesn't impact the municipality at all. We're not required -- we're not requiring municipal services or anything like that. I don't really know if that's applicable, but once I cut through this, if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to chat about those. And I'm down to number 15 at this point, on page 14. We're required to provide analysis of potential environmental impacts, including effects of surface and groundwater bodies, air quality, wildlife resources, and such. And as you'll see, I've attached a letter from the Maine State Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Service. And they've indicated, or they've agreed with us, that there's going to be no impact there, and there's no substantive wildlife in that area there. And again, you know, the overriding theme here is that that's a space that's already We, as mentioned before, I'm down at number 17 and 18. We're required to do an erosion control plan and a stormwater management plan. I've submitted that, and you'll see that what's in your package, there's only about a six-page document there. The entire document, which is about 50 pages or so, you have the balance of it, Nicole has, and the balance of it, the other 45 pages of what are just computations and math and stuff. So, I submitted one for the file, and I left the introduction and conclusion in all of your packages. And what I'd like to do is if you could just, on the final page, I'll just read to you what the conclusion says. And in the conclusion, it indicates that the computations in the report show that stormwater runoff will be maintained at or below pre-development rates for the two, 10, and 25-year storms, and erosion control measures, both temporary and permanent, shall be installed to maintain and re-establish ground cover for the site. Interesting thing, it said "at or below" because we found, there's actually a chart in here that we found that, you know, you had that big hockey rink there, which is completely impervious surface, and we replaced that impervious surface with crushed stone. So, you know, in many instances, many of the computations show that we're better off at this point than what you had prior to when we came. So, that's the results of our stormwater management and erosion control study. There's also a couple items. And actually, what I'm going to do now, at the end of the conditional use permit section in the ordinance, there's seven criteria that you guys have to vote on to approve or deny us. And before we get to that, I'm going to skip to section 9.4 of the ordinance, because 9.4 is a little section that sets out only a couple items that are required specifically for communications towers. So, let's talk about that, and then we'll just go back to the final items for the conditional use. So, on page 46, which is section 9.4, communications towers, yeah, it's got eight different items that we have to do for communication towers. Number one, for locations, it requires us to look for existing structures before we build towers. And as you know, this whole area out here, there's just nothing out there for us to There's a 50% setback from property lines. And when I say 50% setback, look at the tower and take 50% of that. So, if we're looking at 195-foot tower, what is that? That's -- my math is bad, 90-something feet. But we do have that setback circle shown in the plans. Section B, as mentioned, you limit the heights of tower in town to 195 feet, and that's what we're asking for. There's a subsection here that talks about radio frequency propagation surveys. And why don't I come back to that in just a couple seconds? I'll go through the other stuff here, finalize this, because the rest of this stuff is fairly straightforward. It might take a second to talk about the propagation studies. Down at the bottom of the page, it indicates that, as mentioned, we're required to propose a monopole tower. We have. It also mentions that we have to design our towers for capacity for co-location. And you know why? Whoever wrote your ordinance just wanted to make sure that when new people come to town, they don't have to -- everybody doesn't have to build their own tower. And as shown, our tower will be sufficient for multiple carriers, if approved. Number five talks about lease periods. It says that the space has to be leased for at least 10 years. We've, as mentioned, we've leased this with the town of Fairfield, and the lease is for 30 years. Number six, this was one of the footnotes that I pointed out on the site plan. It specifically says, "New tower shall be constructed with materials and colors that match or blend in with the surrounding natural or built environment to the maximum extent practical." So, as mentioned, that's going to be a dull steel gray galvanized finish, and it's going to be a narrow profile. And then it requires us to adhere to structural standards established by the EIA-TIA, and I indicated on the site plan that our engineers have indicated that. And finally, this indicates that if a tower is unused or out of service for 18 months, we have to remove it as soon as possible. And for your information, in the lease that we did with the town, the lease requires us to do that too. So, we're legally obligated to do so. And the only item that I haven't touched in this tower communications section is that piece that requires us to talk about radio frequency items, so. If you would please pull out the two colored plots that I provided. And once you get those out, it's probably easier to follow this. If you put them side by side, and if you are putting them side by side, and I'll point them out up here on the easel as well while I'm talking through this. And if you do put them side by side, you'll see that one is titled "The Existing Conditions", and then one is "Proposed." So, obviously, what's going on now and what we'd like to see going on. And I'll go through this in a couple steps, little quadrant by quadrant. We'll look at what's existing and what we're looking at doing. First of all, if you look up in the upper left-hand corner of the existing, you'll see -- oh, let me step back a second, please. The colors on these plots, you'll see three different colors. Number one is green, number two is yellow, and number three is white. The green is what all the cell phone carriers look for, because that shows the coverage level that we're looking for. And that means you can use -- it covers, it provides services to people walking, in cars, and real importantly, in buildings. Got to be strong enough to penetrate the buildings. So, those are what the three colors are. And you can see by looking up in the upper left-hand quadrant of the existing conditions that there's a lot of yellow and white area signifying. We got some pretty bad coverage through, you know, that area of Fairfield. Now, if you want to, while we're talking about that area, if you want to look to the right-hand plots and show what 195-foot tower will do, you'll see unfortunately, that tower's really not that tall to cover that area out there. So, you know, we can go out and pinpoint a couple improvements, but overall, we'd love to have a taller tower to bleed out there, but it's just not going to happen with 195-foot tower. The next quadrant, I'd like to have you have a look at, is basically right in the center, the center top. And you'll recognize this by where Route 11 and Route 201 goes north, crosses under Route 95 and goes north. You'll see on the existing RF plots that there's a lot of yellow up there. And that's a problem, because, you know, Route 201 is a heavily traveled route. You'll see Route 95, we've got some yellow poor coverage on Route 95. And you'll see across the river in Clinton, is that Benton? Across the river in Benton, we've got some poor coverage too. Now, if you want to look at that same space over on our proposed coverage with this 195-foot you can see that it's not totally covered in by the green, meaning the service that we're looking for, but it works a little bit. And more importantly, once you get closer to Route 95, and actually, that intersection of Route 95 and Route 201, Route 11, you'll see that this does a good job of filling in that yellow space. So, we got some real nice coverage right around 201 and 95, but But, once again, you know, for 195-foot tower, we're just not going to get the height to get that northerly area of Route 201 towards the top of the plots. The final area that we'll look at is, if you look on the existing conditions plot, you'll see that downtown Fairfield, right where Route 11 is, that runs parallel to the river, it's starting right around the intersection, you know, where Western Avenue runs into 201 at the Irving Station, you'll see we've got some pretty bad coverage there. And that probably was our main concern here. Right downtown Fairfield, we just didn't have, we just had really bad coverage. And you'll see, once again, to the proposed site, you know, we've done a pretty good job of filling that in. And that was a little job considering, if you look at, and you can all picture it, where the industrial park is, the signal had to be high enough to get up and over that hill where Lawrence High School is, and over and down, you know, towards where Route 11 and 201 is. But nevertheless, you know, we've covered this. And the final thing that I'll mention on these plots is, across the river in Benton, and I know you're not the Benton Planning Board, or, you know, your citizens don't live in Benton, but nevertheless, you'll see on River Road, Kennebec River Road, you'll see in the existing conditions that we've got some spotty service there. We got a place or two that's pretty good, and we got a place or two that's not very good. But you'll see that in our proposed coverage, that fills in pretty nicely with our new tower. And before I wrap this up, you know, I will mention that lots of times municipalities will say, "Yeah, well," they'll say things like, "Well, Benton isn't really, you know, where we live, so let Benton take care of that or worry about that." But I'd like to point out that currently, you guys, you're getting all of your cell phone coverage from a tower in Waterville. There's currently no towers in Fairfield at all. So, actually, not just Waterville. You're getting your coverage from a tower in Waterville, and you can see it on the existing coverage. It says Waterville Downtown. It's 160 feet. That's taking care of what you've got in the downtown area. And up to the north, you're getting coverage from a Clinton tower up on Route 95. And that's a huge tower. That's about 250 feet tall. So, you know, that's a long signal from a big tower. So, nevertheless, that's the RF presentation, and that's what we're doing here. That shows what we want to cover, well, what it does cover, it also shows what we're not covering. And we understand that you only allow 195-foot tower. We'd love to have something taller, but, you know, we can make the real important stuff work with 195-foot tower. Last thing I'll say about height is, height's important. You know, we discussed that item about, you know, we're required to provide space for additional carriers coming in the future. And if we went with much lower tower, we'd have two problems. These spaces we aren't covered now, we'd cover even less, number two. The future carriers would have more problems. So, in closing, I'd like to go back to the conditional use section and just go over, and this will only take just a minute, I believe, on page 15. Yeah, you've got those seven items that you're going to vote on, you know, if we do get approved. And very quickly, number one, unsafe or unhealthy conditions within the neighborhood. Well, we really aren't, we're really presenting any unsafe conditions there. Again, that's an industrial park, developed for industrial items, and that's exactly what we are. There's no neighbors really that close. We're out by the highway.
Excuse me. There are neighbors close.
Number two, it talks about traffic congestion, as we discussed. After the initial construction, we're looking at, on average, one vehicular trip per month. So, we're not going to create traffic congestion. Number three, we talked about this, undue reduction of air, water quality, wildlife habitat, and will not create undue flooding or soil erosion. We've provided reports from, the reports that we've discussed that shows that this really isn't an impact on any of these items. Number four, to the greatest extent feasible, we're supposed to preserve historic, prehistoric or archaeological resources. And in the packet, I submitted a letter from the Maine Historic Preservation Office. And they've indicated that there's no historic sites around this area that are going to be disturbed. And I also attached to their letter, y'all on your website, you have a map that shows at least what the town believes to be historical sites. And I've attached that just to show that. We aren't close to any of those. Couple more left. The development will not cause an undue strain on public facilities or services, including public roads, water supplies, sewage disposal, solid waste systems, police, educational or other services. We're really a low-impact, really a low-impact facility there. We really historically have never really seen, you know, a large impact or significant impact on municipal services. The applicant has sufficient financial and technical capacity to complete the development. I included in the package, it was a 10-Q, I believe, one of U.S. Cellular's financial filings with the SEC. And the last year that was available, they generated something in the neighborhood of $4 billion in revenue. Of course, they got a lot of expenses shown in that balance sheet, but the point is, you know, they're a national carrier, that they do have the financial capability to do this. I also mentioned in the packet that I didn't get the amount or the number of sites that we have in Maine, but I know as of a couple years ago, we were at something in a neighborhood of 600 sites. It's more than that now, but I think I said in the packet, we have at least 600 sites. So, we've been, this is what U.S. Cellular does for their business. We've got the technical capacity for that. And finally, the last criteria, it talks about or asks about the comprehensive plan. I left my comprehensive plan in my folder, but I think I remember all the items in that. The comprehensive plan, excuse me, I'm going to get that. It's about four items in the comprehensive plan. And page 43, it talks about when that whole industrial park was developed and the reasons for developing that industrial park, to bring industry and commerce to town, which is exactly what we're doing. Also, there's a section that it states that one of the objectives for the town should be exploring creative sources of municipal funding. Of course, as I mentioned, we're leasing the space to the town. And it's a 30-year lease, and if I'm correct, I believe, over the 30 years with the annual increases, that will account for something in the neighborhood of about $713,000 bucks. So, we are creating municipal funding. There's also an objective to seek new and diverse forms of commercial development, which is what this is. And finally, there's a section in local economic development where one of the objectives is to bring to town enhanced infrastructure. And of course, as we all know, these days, that's wireless communications is what everybody uses all the time, every place. And this indeed is bringing that to town. So, having said that, that's my presentation. So, any questions? I'd love to field.
Can you speak to the environmental impact of the lighting on the tower?
Well, the good thing about this tower is, and that's why you guys limit the height to 195 feet, because lighting isn't required on towers until you break 200 feet. So, there's not going to be any lighting there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
We're still in public hearing. Any questions or comments from public? Or board? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're still in public hearing, so we're going to move on to item B under public hearing, which is a preliminary subdivision application for DW LLC's Route 104 subdivision to construct a proposed 42-lot subdivision off Norwood Walk Road on former Kennebec Water District land consisting of 167 acres on assessing as map 2 Lot 9 in the Rural Residential Land Use District. So, Randy, you will do a presentation for us there.
I believe we have the plan available on the monitors here, hopefully. Yes, sir.
Before you begin, Randy, I'm going to leave in a few minutes because I'm on the Winslow Planning Board's agenda tonight.
Okay.
For our project. So, he will take over, but go ahead, and if I walk out of the room.
All right. I'll understand.
Thank you. No real notes. No real notes. That wasn't that funny. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay. I'm Randy Butler with Diriggo Engineering, here to present, again, the project for a subdivision out on Route 104. We were here, I believe, two months ago. And not a lot has changed, other than adding a little bit of detail. The basic layout is about the same as we had previously. Essentially, one connection to Route 104, Norwood Walk Road. And since we came last time, we have gotten approval, a permit, from MDOT for that connection. And as we've talked about before, that connection will be a split lane, it'll be an island. And we'll have, one of the requests from MDOT is that it be striped for only one lane. In other words, we'll have white lines and so forth indicating that it's one lane. But in case of emergency, there's enough pavement, there'll be 22 feet of pavement on each side of the island to facilitate traffic going each way. So, that, I think that's a good fit for everybody, so that generally, it'll only be one way in and out. But then, if, in case of emergency, we do have allowance for two-way traffic on either side of the island. Again, one of the accommodations for traffic flow within is if there is an emergency, an accident, for example, on that first couple of hundred feet, we do have a loop that we'll have allowed around through the construction site. In fact, if my pointer works right, I can point that out on screen here, and I can see it's not going to work right. It's not going to show up on that background, so that's not going to help us, I guess. But at the law right there, you'll see a road that kind of heads south, slightly southeasterly, and then there's a loop road that will go through the construction site, connect back down near the entrance. And the intent of that is generally, it's not going to be open to the public, but in case of emergency, we'll have Knox Box or something similar for emergency personnel to have access to the site. So, that's what's going on there. Current design is 43 residential lots. Through the process of designing this, we realized that we have two number 40s. We'll be remedying that next time around. We have done soil test pits on, they were just finished up last Friday for septic systems. Soil tests were finished up. We don't have the reports ready just yet, but everything indicates that the soils are adequate for septic, individual septic systems. Wells, at this point, the plan is to go with private wells. As you are aware, there is some discussion about perhaps water main extension out through there. If that happens, then there may be some interest in connecting to that. But I would imagine, at this point, that might be a year or two out before that might happen. So, my thought would be that at least the first lot starting out, if anything is developed prior to the water main, some of the lots may be developed with wells, private wells. And we're also talking about sprinklered systems for the residences. So, we would have to make that part of the, part of the deed restrictions, part of the covenants, would be for private systems that, in residences, to be sprinklered, which really doesn't add too much of a cost to the system, fortunately. That was part of our, and we'll continue to work with the fire chief to determine exactly what meets his requirements. We do have two different, at least two wet ponds on site, detention ponds, if you will, but they'll be holding water all the time, except in the case of extreme drought. Thank you. And we may have the option of using one of those at least for a dry hydrant. So, we'll, again, we'll coordinate with the fire chief on that, to make sure that we meet the town standards and so forth. One of the lots, as you are aware, the upper-left lot, is reserved for a number of duplexes. Currently, we're targeting nine duplexes, so a total of 18 units there on about 17 acres of land is the intent for that parcel. And then the other parcel to the south, immediately off the entrance, that is targeted for the use of Ranger Construction, for their construction yard, new office and storage building, maintenance building, and that sort of thing. We met with DEP last week, and we do have to apply for a site location of development permit. But we've got two or three months of work ahead of us to get that permit ready. I hope to submit that sometime mid-fall. And usually, it's about a six-month turnaround is what we expect, give or take. So, hopefully, if everything lines up, we'll be able to start doing some clearing and construction late winter, springtime neighborhood, our goal. Any questions?
You mentioned wells.
Yes.
Individual wells for each lot?
Yes. That's the intent right now. Yes.
Anybody check to see, is there any water?
Well, we've contacted, the state of Maine has a well database. And that show, that doesn't show all the wells in the area, but as well drillers log in information, and they don't always do it, but there are half a dozen wells in that area. Some of them nearby are registering seven or more gallons a minute, which is pretty impressive. So, we have got a letter out, a request from some well drillers to give us a letter stating that they feel there's adequate capacity there. So, you're correct. And as far as PFAS, we've checked the database, and there doesn't seem to be an issue in this area at all. We're kind of on the top of the hill, and it seems like more of the hits and trouble areas are further to the north. So, there's nothing in this immediate area that indicates any issue as far as PFAS.
Any questions from the public? Or members of the board? Hearing none, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
New business.
New business. Now, Nicole, you'll have to guide me. New business.
Okay. So, you would just open back up with your discussion on the cell tower application first, which is 4A.
Okay, we'll open, new business for the conditional use finding effect on 8221. File number, condition 2021-03, is filed on July 7, '21.
So, are they ready, is everybody on the board ready to propose findings? They want to move to findings?
I take a vote for that.
Sure.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Second. All in favor? And I'm now going to read the ones that are non-applicable.
Okay.
The Town of Fairfield land behind the Public Works Building, 3 Industrial Road, map 1, Lot 7. The application has been received. A site plan to scale showing at a minimum the location of the existing and proposed structures and distance from lot lines, body waters, water supply, and sewage disposal facilities was submitted to the planning board with an application plan of T-1. If the market value of the project will exceed $80,000, a copy of the plan and specifications for this construction shall be required, and it was planned C5 and C6. Existing topographical contour, see the aerial plan C1. Proposed grading at contour intervals of no greater than five feet, see plan C4. Site improvements, as shown on the overall site plan, C1. Landscaping and buffer areas as currently existing, no changes proposed. Stormwater and erosion control structures, as shown on stormwater management plan by the Wood Environmental Solutions Incorporated. An estimate of the vehicle trip to be generated by the development and any modifications to public roads which may be necessary to absorb the traffic. As described in the application, after construction, the facility may generate one vehicle per month on average for routine maintenance. A statement from the fire chief, the suitable provision for fire protection have been included, submitted with the application. One request that the developer obtains a knockbox lock for the gate. A list of names and addresses of all landowners within 200 feet of the property boundaries was submitted with the application. Letters to abudders were mailed on July 22, 2021, notifying that tonight's public hearing on this application via Zoom meeting and in person. An analyst of potential environmental impacts, including efforts on surface and groundwater bodies, air quality, and wildlife resources. If any potentially negative impacts are identified, a management strategy consistent with the performance standards of the ordinance, state, and federal regulations must be prepared by a qualified professional, as shown in a stormwater plan by Wood Environment and Infrastructure. An erosion control plan prepared by a registered professional engineer, as described in a stormwater plan by Wood Environment and Infrastructure Report. A stormwater management plan prepared by a registered professional engineer, see the stormwater management plan by Wood Environment and Infrastructure. Now, go to the findings. One, the development will not create unsafe or unhelpful conditions within a neighborhood in which it is located, and she'll not create or separate efforts upon neighboring properties. This proposed cell tower in the industrial land use district has been designed to be in compliance with the requirements of the district. The development will not create or add to traffic congestion at or below level D of service, as defined, and will not create unsafe traffic movements on public roads. As described, this will not, this will be an unmanned site, one vehicle per month after construction. The development will not result in undue reduction of air or quality, water quality, or wildlife inhabitants, and will not cause undue flooding or soil erosion. The proposed project will not result in a reduction of water or air quality or wildlife habitat, and will not cause undue flooding or soil erosion. See the Wood Environment and Infrastructure Report and the IF&amp;W letter. The development will be the greatest extent feasible to preserve historic, prehistoric, or archilackual resources. There are no known identified historic, prehistoric, or archilackual resources on the site. The development will not cause an undue strain on public facilities or services, including public roads, water service, sewer disposal, solid waste systems, police, educational, or other services. The project will not cause any undue strain on public facilities or services. The project does not require water or sewer. The applicant has sufficient financial and technical capacity to complete the development. See the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission Form 10K Annual Report for U.S. Solar is proof of financial capacity. The development is consistent with the Fairfield Comprehensive Plan and in compliance with state and federal law, as well as all ordinance rules and regulations of the town, including the performance standards of the land use ordinance, unless the board acts to waive said standard. The solar tower is consistent with the Fairfield Comprehensive Plan by enhancing telecommunications and rework, remote working in this area of Fairfield, and the site has been designed to be in compliance with the town and state requirements. Section 9.4, Community Towers, has a question mark. The 195-foot proposed tower is needed to service this area of town. Radio frequency propagation survey demonstrating the proposed tower height.
That was explained to us in those color charts, the coverage before and the proposed coverage after. So that has been answered.
The tower is a monopole design. The U.S. Solar will be the service provider occupying this tower. The tower will be placed on a leased partial land from the Town of Fairfield. The tower will be built to match the built environment of the industrial road. The tower and supporting structure were designed and certified by a registered professional engineer. Any communication tower that is unused or out of service for a period of 18 months, continuous months, shall be considered abandoned and shall be removed as soon as possible. The only thing I think we might want to add on here is the knockbox that the fire chief requested.
Got a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
One condition of approval.
Hmm? All right.
So I got the one condition of approval.
Yes.
So I wrote that down. Are you going to take an overall vote?
We take an overall vote?
Yes. All should approve.
With one condition.
With the condition.
Yep. All in favor? DW LLC to construct a proposed 42-lot subdivision off Norridge Walk Road on land formerly owned by the Kennebec Water District, consisting of 167 acres on Assessors Map 2, Lot 9, in the Rural Residential Land Use Ordinance, District. Now, I just go through the finding of facts, correct?
First, you have to propose to move on to findings. So they did identify that they're missing a few things from the preliminary application tonight, so you could move on to findings and note the items that they're still missing to make it a complete application, so.
Because this is just a draft now, right, still?
Correct. This is right. You're just proposing, you're just proposing, and you can list the items, condition that they get, you know, you can approve it with the condition that they submit the missing items. So what I had picked up on during the discussion was that the subsurface waste test, the test pits, they hadn't submitted that report yet.
That's correct.
So you don't have that written report. You could set that as a condition, that you receive a copy of those test pits. And you have no confirmation on adequate water supply at this point. They're still reaching out trying to find that. That could also be set as a condition that they provide proof of adequate, sufficient water.
Okay.
You know, so there were a few things. I think that's what I picked up on, those two items. Subsurface report and water report.
Drywall for the.
That was submitted today, and I emailed it to all of you. Did you get that?
Yep.
Yeah, so they do have that in writing, and.
Oh, all the applicable permits. Which one did they receive?
The DOT entrance permit off of Norridge Walk Road. I emailed that out to everyone today. They had sent it to us. They were waiting for the official written copy. They had received a verbal from DOT.
Okay.
But today, they got their written confirmation on that. And I did broadcast that out to everyone this morning, I believe. I have a copy of it here, if you'd like to. I've got a couple copies, if you want to.
You read it. So I don't really have the finding on this one.
So this is the preliminary, and you're just, basically, at this point, in your ordinance, if you go to the subdivision ordinance, it requires you to, to let the developer know if they've submitted a complete application for preliminary, so that they know what they need to work on to move towards their final. So they, they know they have to do DEP site location, which he explained takes six months. We'll get a copy of that also, which the members can all look at. So that, that's going to be in our office as part of this submittal. But preliminary is your preliminary review of what, where they're at with the project. They do need a professional land surveyor to, you know, set the pins and do all the survey work, and they do know that that is needed for final. So there are some things that, this is just to let them know, is the application for preliminary complete enough that they can move ahead and move towards working on their final plan?
Okay, so I really don't have to read this over? Just add the thing that they still need.
Yeah, so, right, you're going to propose your, your results, like what you find are still needed to complete a preliminary.
Okay, and if I miss some, you can add them.
Okay.
So, don't ask question how I do this.
Won't vote until we get all this new stuff?
At this time, basically, you're not signing anything, you're just reviewing. Is the preliminary complete?
Right, so I don't have to read through the whole thing at all, do I?
It's up to the board if they want to propose the findings that way. You should always, for the record, propose that you've taken the ordinance, and you've taken the application, and you've compared it.
Do you want me to go through, read them again?
It's a different, it's a whole different ordinance. So the last one was land use ordinance.
Yep.
And this is a subdivision plan.
Right.
Right, so when you do proposed findings on a subdivision plan, you should propose, like, here's the requirement, and here's what we find is missing. It should be noted.
Okay, so I should go through it again now?
Right, if somebody wants to make a vote to.
Bail them, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We, they know that you're not the chair, and that this is not something that you usually sit in and have to do. But for the record, and to make sure that his application is reviewed correctly, and that someone doesn't say you didn't take the time to look at the ordinance and answer the question, probably best that you do do it.
Okay, so this is a draft, this subdivision preliminary plans.
So do you want to take a vote to move to findings? Because usually.
So move.
Okay.
How's that?
That's good.
Do what?
So move, to move to.
Move to the findings.
And second in.
All in favor?
Okay.
This is Town of Fairfield subdivision ordinance, Article 7, Preliminary Plan for Major Subdivision, 7.1, Findings of Fact and Conclusion, dated August 2, 2021. It's Route 104 subdivision. The property, the owner of the property is DW LLC, who has demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a copy of the warranty deed, Somerset County Registry of Deeds Book 4019, page 133. The applicant is Randy Butler, PE Derago Engineering Representative for DW LLC. The property, the location of the property is on the Norridge Walk Road adjacent to the city of Waterville Town Line on Fairfield Tax Assessors Map Number 2, Lot 9, and Waterville Tax Assessment Map 72, Lot 80-1, and contains 42 lots in the Fairfield, with two lots extending into Waterville totaling 167 acres in Fairfield.
Can I just stop you at number three right there? So the state of Maine, state law for subdivision requires that when a subdivision crosses a town line into another community, the planning board take a vote. Do you want to sit in on their future meeting when they do that, or do you want to just continue reviewing just what's in Fairfield on your own and not have to join them? So if you could take a vote on that.
Do I take that here?
Make a motion that we don't sit in on the Waterville.
All right, second. Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you. I'll send a letter on your behalf to Waterville that you're not going to participate in their review.
I think we did that last time, too, didn't we?
Correct, we did. But I still, I needed a vote for that. Thank you.
The property is not located in the shore, shoreline zone. The property is not in a flood hazard area. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into 42 lots on the subject property. The completed preliminary plan application was submitted on July 21, 2021. A public hearing was held on August 2, 2021. Letters were mailed to abudders on 7/23/2021, and a notice was placed in the newspaper on 7/25/2021, and again on 7/30/2021. The water is to be supplied by private wells. Letter of adequate water to be supplied for review at the meeting.
So we did not receive that letter tonight, so that's one of the items that you're looking for.
Does the planning board require hydraulic, hydrologic assessment, Section 7.2B, Number 22, groundwater? The proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality of, quantity of groundwater.
That's the report you're still waiting for.
Yep. Because they also want a drywall for the fire protection. Would I bring that at the same time?
Correct. I mean, that's supplying adequate water, so when you have 42 residential lots proposed in a commercial development, you need some sort of fire suppression. So yes, that's the need for adequate water.
Okay. And a private sprinklers required also.
Right, if, if that might be a condition of approval of the subdivision, it would have to be stamped on the plan, too, if you set that as a condition of approval.
Sewerage is to be disposed of by private subsurface waste disposal systems.
Again, you're waiting for that particular report.
Waiting for that one?
On your soils.
The site evaluations of each lot, meeting the requirement of the main plumbing rules, were completed by site evaluator report to be supplied by the meeting, for the meeting 7/23/21.
Right, so you, right, number 10 and number 11 basically are the same, the same thing. You need to know that there's adequate soils, and you don't have the soils reported.
The stormwater drainage plan has been prepared by, being prepared by Derago Engineering for the DEP permitting that will be submitted soon.
Correct, that's that site location of development.
That one they got in today? Did they?
They are going to apply soon.
It will be, I expect, a couple of months before we submit the application.
So you will get a copy at the office, and all of those stormwater drainage plans will be included. be inclusive in that site location permit.
Okay.
So we do not have that.
Conclusions. Notice to abutters was mailed on 7/23 and a notice of the public hearing was published in a newspaper on Sunday, July 25, 21, and again on Friday, July 30, 2021. The preliminary Route 104 subdivision shows the proposed streets and the streets are not yet named. The names of these streets need to be submitted to the Town of Fairfield to get road approvals for the final plan. The preliminary subdivision plan boundary lines of the track to are based on a plan titled Boundary Survey Division of Land of Kennebec Water District dated August 21, 2007 by Gabbeck Surveyors Incorporated. This preliminary subdivision plan has not yet been signed by a Maine licensed land surveyor. A preliminary subdivision plan was prepared by Derigo Engineering. The proposed lot lines are shown on the preliminary plan and the lots will need to be surveyed by a Maine licensed land surveyor. Route 104 subdivision proposed covenant covenants and deed restrictions, see attachment five. Contour lines are shown at two-foot intervals. The proposed subdivision contains 167 acres in Fairfield, proposed to be divided into 40 single-family residential lots, one lot to contain nine duplexes and one lot contains one open space for the subdivision. The proposed streets are shown on the preliminary subdivision plan. Prior to offering the streets to the municipal offices for acceptance as public ways, a written certification signed by a state of Maine registered professional engineer certifying that the proposed ways meet the design and construction requirements of the Fairfield subdivision ordinance. As-built plans for the proposed public ways may only be submitted to the municipal offices upon completion of all street construction and only up to 75% of all lots in the approved original subdivision final plan as filed with the Somerset County Registry of Deeds has been developed and received final certificates of occupancy for the structures from the Town of Fairfield. The subdivision open space is shown on the plan. Traffic impact analyst pending to be delivered for the board at the meeting, for the meeting.
Traffic.
That's still pending.
Still pending, okay, so number nine.
We hired a consultant, but.
Okay, still pending. Okay. The next item you did receive. Entrance permit.
MDOT entrance permit needed and approval of a combined large interest in exit. Need a copy of that document. And that's still.
We got today, I just handed one to you. Right there to your right hand side.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that document is one that we've got.
A subject, my pronouncement is terrible, aesthetic, cultural or natural values. The proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area. Aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, all the municipality are rare and irreplaceable natural areas of public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline. The pond area is being restrained retained as subdivision open space.
That is shown as Lot 2. It looks like almost 21 acres of land.
What, 21 acres roughly?
Uh, 20.92.
Conformity with local ordinances and plans. The proposed preliminary subdivision plan conforms with a duly adopted subdivision ordinance and comprehensive plan. In making this determination, the planning board has interpreted the ordinance and plan. Yes, the proposed plan will add much-needed local residential housing for people that wish to live and work in the Fairfield area. Financial and technical capacity, the subdivider has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section. See statement in attachment four. See the subdivision ordinance, Article 13. Requirements for the final subdivision plan performance guarantees. Freshwater wetlands, all freshwater wetlands within a proposed subdivision have been identified on any map submitted as part of the application regardless of the size of the wetlands. River, stream, or brook, any river, stream, or brook within or buttoned proposed subdivision has been identified on any map submitted as part of the application. For purposes of this section, river, stream, or brook has the same meaning as entitled 38, Section 480-B, subsection 9. Stormwater, the proposed subdivision will provide an accurate stormwater management. Will be detailed on a DEP permitting. The planning board requires a copy of each of these permits. Municipal boundaries, if the proposed development crosses municipal boundaries, it will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing public ways in an adjoining municipality in which part of the subdivision is located. Uh, let's see, yes, the city of Waterville, Waterville will review this subdivision for the portion of the two lots in Waterville. Fairfield Planning Board sending a letter to City of Waterville, 7/23/21 notifying the public hearing. This parcel of land has not been tidbit harvested in violation of the liquidation harvesting rules adopted pursuant to Title 12, Section 8869, Subsection 14. The standards of the town preliminary subdivision application have been met except for the following, which have been waived by the planning board.
Well, not waived by the planning board, but they have been identified by the planning board.
Okay.
So to recap what's still missing, number nine, right, the well water. Uh, number 10 and 11, the site evaluator soils test.
Okay, yeah. So those are gonna be the.
Um, that's the ones I've, okay, and number 12, their DEP permitting, their site location and most likely NERPA permit.
Yeah.
You have two Army Corps also?
Uh, that, yeah, the NERPA goes to Army Corps.
Okay, NERPA goes, okay. And Army Corps. All right, and, um, let's see, the street names, that's up to Bill to connect with his developer and come up with the names he would like to have for the roads. And then they would submit that to Chief Bickford, who's the addressing officer. So that's just for final, the road names have to be determined. The licensed surveyor has to set the pins. So that brings up another question also. At that point, once the roads are set and lots are all marked, does the planning board want to do a site visit so they can get a visual on the face of the earth where the road will be, where the lots are? Because typically for a, you know, and I know you have this beautiful aerial and that's fine too, it probably provides much more detail than walking through the woods and looking at pins, but that, you know, that's a also something that you need to discuss if you're going to each do your own site visit at some point. When will the survey pins be in the ground so you can get a visual of the layout of it? Because you haven't talked about that yet. The traffic impact analysis, we need that.
Question. How would we make such a visit until, I mean, you would have already expended a whole lot of money to build any sort of road for us to take a look at this?
Right, other than walking through the woods, that's why I said you haven't talked about it. So if you, if the board feels that the visual layout on the map and they've given you some aerial photos of the area, when he presented, he showed you an aerial.
There's a lot more information there than there would be looking at trees.
Right.
A few tags of where the road's going.
Right.
Right, so that might be what you require of him, just to tag where the entrance road will go, so if you feel like driving by it, but, right, that's, so that's up to the planning board members if you feel that a site visit individually at, you know, when you want to drive by it prior to their submitting for final plan.
Site inspection is good because like last month we talked about the transfer station. Now I was concerned about being close to the ball field. I don't know up to today, look where the tower's going. I was surprised like where the road turns, the ball field's quite a ways off from there. Plus there's hills and trees and it's not like you see just looking at a flat map and everything looks.
Right.
Flat when you walk out there and there's.
If it didn't help you, there are quite a few trails out there and I'd be perfectly willing if you wanted to coordinate a site visit, oh, you needed the site there and walk as many trails we could see a good share of the site. I'm sure you don't want to see it cranny, but.
No.
Lawrence, you want to go walk around?
Well, if we take a vote, does anybody want to make a motion to have a site visit?
Or you could do your site visit on your own, just as Charlie did his site visit on his own for.
Somebody'd have to be there to show us around.
If you would like to schedule a site visit with the developer, you could certainly do that. I have his email and you could coordinate a time with him. Or if you want to do it as a group.
I'm good.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with, I don't think it's, I don't think I would see much out there until they start doing some land work. To really visualize.
Let us do it later, eh?
Right. I mean, it's all up on a hill.
I say individual.
Individual site visits. The consensus.
That works for me.
You could just take off the beginning and the end so that we know we're on the right line.
Okay, while the end is on the, yeah, we can, the end is on this, the coast end of Red Cat Line and there's a road there, Kennebec Water District had a trail going in there. Was a gate, I think you've moved the gate.
Yeah, they took the gate down.
Gaze down.
See that?
And just a, I don't know, a couple hundred yards beyond that, we've got a couple of great states separated at the edge of the road. That's that's representing where the new road will be going in.
Okay.
Okay.
The entire stretch along there is built properly until you visit the next residence on the way. Stretch from the town line all the way to the next house.
One other quick question. Are, is Ranger gonna plow this, this place or is that gonna eventually go over to the town?
The intent is to eventually go over the town, it's gonna be built to town standards and certified to town standards.
So you got, you got two Waterville lots on there. What are, what's?
Well, those won't be, but the, you're only plowing, uh, you're only plowing the, what's labeled on the plan is Road A, B, and C. That's what would be what the intent is to.
Okay.
The Waterville lots are on, portions of them are on rider boats.
Okay. Need a motion?
We're still trying to determine what is missing here. You've got your DOT permit and stormwater is coming with, so, right, at this point it's, you've identified the items that are still missing to have a completed preliminary application. So you could set that as conditions that you receive all those to consider it a completed preliminary.
So we, we take a vote to accept a preliminary draft plan with the said missing articles that Nicole just read off?
Intention that you receive those, okay.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, so that would be the preliminary and that you would supply. I'll type it up for you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, ready? Experience.
No problem.
Yes, sir. Perfect, that works for me. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda.
Is there any unfinished business?
None that I know.
New item by the public?
Anyone on Zoom that has a new item that wants to discuss it with the board or?
Anybody out there? I hear none.
No. No one wants.
Anybody by the board members?
I have one question, I don't want to make it go long, but could you just kind of review what we've, what we're awaiting for as far as solar farms? How many we've approved?
Yes.
And what the status of each of those is?
Okay, so you originally approved Nextera Energy going at the end of Kendall Annex Road.
Yeah.
And that was supposed to go directly out to the grid. It wasn't going to go to a transfer station.
Right.
Okay, that was like high, I think it was almost like a 300-acre development.
Right.
That was tabled. Nextera Energy is currently, my understanding, not in agreement with CMP's expansion of the corridor from Quebec through Maine. And they never came forward to pull a building permit and start their solar project. So I don't know, I've reached out to a few of the representatives that originally came in for permitting and none have ever responded to me because when it was getting close to the permitting.
Is their window expired?
Um, they're with the planning board, yes, but with their site location of development, because they too had to go to DEP and do all that high-level 300-acre development for their roads and their solar field. Those permits, I believe, are still valid. I don't know how much longer they will be valid. Certainly they could reapply. Uh, so that is one. Then the next one you approved is on the closed landfill.
Yeah.
They were ready to start construction and pull the billing permit. When the truck driver showed up in town, he pulled over on Main Street, not far from the Wick's Lumber Building, looking for Escalin Drive so he could turn and drop the solar panels off. He pulled over too far and dumped the packer truck over. So there's a bunch of damaged solar panels and we don't know how long it will take for them to replace those because right now there's a hold on solar panels. Supply, so that's the holdup. I know, that's awful. I mean, he was right here, he was like feet from Escalin Drive.
That couldn't have possibly all been on one truck.
Well, no, but they need all the panels.
So they send the panels before they send the brackets and?
Uh, yep, I guess they send them in different trucks. The panels go in one truck and the.
The bases are all up there.
They are?
The racking system, I think is there.
Somewhere there.
Oh, okay.
So that's on site, they were ready to go, they were just waiting for their panels. So now, um, so that's on hold because they're waiting to see how long it will take. That's two. Then, um, you just approved the one on Oakland Road.
Right.
Okay, then there's one that was preliminary discussion to go at the Larabee Farm at the corner of Ohio Hill and Norwich Walk Road. It used to be.
The 4.9.
Yes, a small one. Uh, there's Revision Energy, that one did go in across from Goodwill Hankley.
Yep.
They had goats in there last weekend eating the grass, so that's how they mow the grass, yeah.
Must have missed that.
What about the one up here in Sherman? Oh, Fred, off of, just as you've brought a Sherman.
Yeah, the Derigo Engineering one is in. They have not received final certificate of completion because you had, the developer and the abutter had come up with some. of completion, because you had, the developer and the abutter had come up with some final changes after you had approved the project, they came back to the planning board and asked you to accept, yeah, accept their negotiations as part, and so you did, and so they still owe some fencing, screening, and some buffering, some trees.
So that's providing no electricity yet?
I don't know 100% the answer to that, because they have not received final from the town, but I don't know for sure if they've started producing or not. But they're so, it's very close.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's very, very close. If it hasn't started yet, it's about to. I did get an email from them the 1st of July that said by mid-July they would be complete, but we're into August and I have not heard from them in two, in three weeks, so that is very close.
Okay.
Has anybody ever thought of putting a limit on how many solar panels we have in the Town of Fairfield?
When the ordinance section was drafted, that was not, no, nobody said, once we hit 10, we're not authorizing anymore to go to town, like, there'll be 10 and that's our limit. That was not part of your ordinance.
More the better.
I don't know if there's anything to the atmosphere, we could always...
Two points maybe, I don't know. Okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Kind of curious, I keep waiting, see these things go.
Say one of our taxes going.
There you go.
So some of them are still permitted, and we're just waiting for them to be built.
Finish it up.
Right, and even the Nextera project is completely permitted, they just need to come back and renew, you know, their conditional use permit with the town, I'm sure they probably won't have any design changes, it's just too...
Too bad about the one up in Hinckley.
That was the, that was the big one.
Huge, yeah, very huge.
Was it 90,000? Yeah, something like that, yeah. It's too bad, they were pretty fired up to do it then.
Yeah.
Right, well, you know, it's not that they've removed it off the table, they, it may very well still be moving forward, they haven't reached out to us, and I have nothing as clerk of the board.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Good job, man, thank you.